We will call to order the regular meeting of the Batavia City Council for Monday, August 21, 2023. I would ask that you all please rise for a brief invocation to be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Tonight, a blessing of appreciation on the folks that we are going to be hearing about tonight. The willingness of others to step forward and help their fellow man in moments of trouble is truly a remarkable and a commendable trait, and one that Batavia has been very, very fortunate to have experienced over the years, and tonight is going to be a shining example of citizens willing to step forward and help others. And for that, we are ever thankful. Also tonight, we are ever thankful for all those from our community who are serving on foreign soil in defense of the special liberties of the United States. And we just ask that a special blessing be showered upon each and every one of those men and women as they go about their vital mission in defending our liberty. Also tonight, we ask for the City Council the vision, understanding, and appreciation as we vote on the items of agenda before us, knowing that in their hearts and minds, each member of the council is here tonight to do what will be in the very best interest of our community and its future. We ask for all these blessings. Amen. Alderman, Soufa, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Sure. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ask the city clerk to call the roll.
Miller?
Here.
Lancy?
Here.
Beck?
Here.
Peiper?
Here.
Chanset?
Here.
Wolf?
Here.
Soufa?
Here.
Barron?
Here.
Lehman?
Here.
Ayazi?
Here.
Malay?
Here.
Uer?
Here.
Serone?
Here.
Vogelsinger?
Here.
14 present, none absent.
Also tonight, I'd like to introduce Lehman Athas, who is my guest here tonight. He's a student at college studying political science, and he was recommended by his grandmother to come out and attend a meeting with me at the City Council. Now, his grandmother is somebody very special in this world. She served as, I believe, Chief of Staff for Mayor Richard M. Daley in the city of Chicago, and to her credit, I will tell you, probably belongs the international airport terminal at O'Hare Airport. She brought together a number of the suburban communities who had issues about that and kind of got everything understood, and really did a wondrous thing in bringing that improvement to our area. And I now have talked to a number of people who have had the ability to use that facility in recent times, and everybody's saying nice things about what Chicago has finally done to bring a nice international terminal to the community. So his grandmother, Rita Athas, is one who really deserves a lot of credit for that to happen. So we welcome you and hope that you've learned something of wisdom from the smart minds that surround you at this table. Thank you. A reminder to everybody to please speak into the microphone for BATV because they are recording this for TV. And moving then to item number five, items to be removed, added, or changed on the agenda. Do we have anybody with anything tonight? Okay. Moving then to item number six, which is presentation of tonight's consent agenda, and I'm told Alderman Chanset is with us on the pictures up there on the screen. So Dan, you want to present the consent agenda?
Absolutely. Your Honor, the consent agenda reads as follows. To accept and place on file building reports for July 2023, a committee of the whole minutes for June 13, 2023, planning commission minutes for July 19, 2023, approvals August 18, 2023, payroll in the amount of $979,901.42. The accounts payable check registered in the amount of $4,934,191.90. City Council minutes for August 7, 2023, June 2023, City Council financials. Ordinance 823-39, approving a purchase of vacant land on Oswald Avenue. Ordinance 23-40, a conditional use permit for motor vehicle sales and leasing, new and used internet-based establishment in the general industrial district. It's a 1395 Paramount Parkway. Robert Hensiger is the applicant. Ordinance 23-38, revising Title III of the Batavia Municipal Code, establishing a truck and semi-trailer storage lot license. And the ordinance 23-36, amending City of Batavia's own code, Title 10, establishing truck and semi-trailer storage lot regulations. I move that we approve the consent agenda as read.
Move Alderman Chanset, Second Baldwin. Soufa, for the approval of the consent agenda is ready. Any discussion? Kirk, call the roll.
Chanset?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Soufa?
Aye.
Barron?
Aye.
Lehman?
Aye.
Ayazi?
Aye.
Malay?
Aye.
Uer?
Aye.
Serone?
Aye.
Vogelsinger?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Lancy?
Aye.
Beck?
Aye.
Peiper?
Aye.
14 yes, no, none absent.
Motion's approved. All right, moving to item number seven is matters from the public for items that are not on the agenda. Do we have anybody this evening that wishes to address this? Okay. I'm now going to recognize Fire Chief Hanson, who is going to do the presentation on recognition of James Lawhead for his good actions.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm really pleased to be here tonight to recognize James Lawhead. James, if you want to come on up. Of course, I'm getting the call in the middle of this. Give me two seconds. Thank you, guys. Appreciate it. James here, on May 23, 2023, James Lawhead of North Aurora assisted a man who had fallen down the steps over here by the depot pond. James rushed to assist the man who appeared to be bleeding from wounds on his head and arm and was in severe pain. James sat with a man, calling 911, and guiding our emergency personnel to the secluded spot on these stairs where the man had fallen. Emergency medical personnel, as you just saw, leaving, responded to the area and treated and transported an 80-year-old gentleman to the hospital. James, on behalf of the citizens of Batavia, we want to thank you for your quick response and assistance in this emergency, and also for just being a good public citizen. Thank you very much. We appreciate it.
And James, as Mayor of Batavia, it's my honor to present to you a certificate of recognition from the city for what you've done. So oftentimes, we hear of situations where people do get hurt or fall or injured, and for whatever reason, they can't get anybody's attention or nobody wants to help them. And it's really good to hear that your example was done and that we can publicize it and let the rest of the world know that when something like this happens, they should follow in your example and your lead and step forward and help those of us who are in need of action. In Batavia right now, we have a growing population of senior citizens. We now have six senior living communities in Batavia, including a couple that are some of the largest in the region, and we've got people talking to us about building more. So Batavia is going to have, this is kind of a watchdog thing to have in our community for the days ahead, as people and then the older group get out and want to go someplace, and then something gets in their way and they fall or get hurt or whatever. So we're going to really need to press this issue, and I'm very pleased to be able to honor you tonight in this way because you send a clear and precise message to everybody out there that, hey, Batavia, it's time to certainly pay attention to what's happening to your fellow citizens, and maybe they be served because your example has kind of hopefully called to others to open their eyes and see what's going on. So on behalf of the community, I want to present to you this certificate of recognition. And does anybody want to?
We do have his family and friends. Does anybody want to come up or be in the picture or not right now?
Oh, I'm not doing that.
You're welcome.
Oh, you mean get a picture with James?
With James. Personal invitation. Come on down.
Yeah. He's not recording.
All right. Thank you very much. Again, it's my distinguished honor to recognize a couple other people tonight. The next person I'd like to recognize is one of our own Batavia Fire Department members, Chris LaFleur and his family. Come on up, Chris. Bring family. It's all right. It's hard to get firemen to come up in front. They're a little shy, a little humble, don't always want to be recognized, but in this case, we are proud to recognize Chris. Chris is a member of our fire department. He's a firefighter, paramedic, one of our full-time personnel, and on May 22, while Chris was at home, he heard a call, and we had just implemented a new system that allows our calls to page out on our phones. So Chris had just gotten this downloaded on his phone about a week earlier, and he noticed it come in across his phone, and it happened to be for someone in his neighborhood that was in cardiac arrest in the front yard. So Chris, you know, not only being the good community citizen, but also paramedic, quickly rushed over to this neighbor who was in full cardiac arrest and began CPR on this subject. Obviously, Chris received the call because 911 had been alerted and found the individual in need of CPR. He did CPR and worked on this individual until additional emergency medical crews arrived. They were able to initially immediately defibrillate this individual, who then started to recover from his situation. We were able to transport the individual to the hospital for additional care and services. And if I'm not mistaken, I believe he and his wife came down and gave you cookies for that. So, yeah, we want to give you recognition also, maybe not the cookies, but we did want to recognize Chris for not only his outstanding work in saving one of our own citizens, but again, for being just a stellar person within our own community and living in our community, and obviously a role model to his kids. So, thank you very much, Chris. I won't stand up the mayor much longer, but thank you again.
Chris, on behalf of the people of Batavia and the City Council, I want to also recognize you and thank you, and I've got a certificate of recognition to give to you here from the City Council. Did you want to take another picture?
Come on, Laura.
I just got the thing open.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I took, you want to get in?
Easy.
Sorry, I didn't sit your lap back.
And just thank you again for what already has been said, for your good actions, and I can remember the day I swore you in the office. You were telling me this was a wife's desire of yours to do this, and you certainly have risen to the occasion, and you've become a shining example for others to follow. So thanks for all you've done and continue to do for the people of Batavia. So thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, I've got one other, which is part of a crew and a team, and it's important to note that while we recognize certain individuals, this year has been a trying time for all of my crew and things, with a lot of severe calls and additional things. And every once in a while, we get that special call or that once and sometimes a career call that comes through that makes you just feel good all over because you're able to do something like save a life or, in this case, deliver a baby. So my next one is kind of not just for one person, but for an entire crew, and to try to put them all together and get them to come in, sometimes I have to encourage them by them being on duty. So I've lost a few of them to a couple of calls here, but tomorrow is that crew's shift. So most of them will be coming in tomorrow during the call meeting, and I'll complete the rest of the recognition tomorrow when I can kind of order them or persuade them to come here. Today, I had to strongly encourage, so I had to strongly encourage Deputy Chief John Lucas, which I honestly, in full disclosure, told me needed to be here for these other recognitions and not for his own. So I will disclose that part of it also. And in the back, kind of hiding in civilian clothes, is Battalion Chief Mark Swinski, who will be here with his crew and may be a little more comfortable tomorrow with it because he's like, "Chief, you gotta have the crew," and I will have that. So for this sake tonight and for Deputy Chief John Lucas, on May 10 of this year, we were once again dispatched for a 911 call that was in the neighborhood of the fire station. Now, a lot of times, all I could tell you is generalities because under HIPAA and disclosure, I can't release certain people, addresses, or places. But this was close to the fire station, one of our own neighbors, as we consider our fire station a house. The dispatch was for a person in labor, and at the time, Deputy Chief Lucas, being the operations chief, was aware that our Station 1 crews were already committed on another call, and it was actually Station 2 from the west side of town having to come all the way over to assist in this situation. Deputy Chief Lucas, realizing that, ran out, also met with Chief Swinski, and then immediately ran over to the home while Chief Swinski got the car with the equipment and came over the home. Deputy Chief Lucas was able to get downstairs where the individual was already actively in labor, just in time to assist in the delivery. As Battalion Chief Mark Swinski arrived with the jump bag or EMS jump bag, he was then able to assist him with the rest of the formal delivery aspect of it, but those quick actions helped the mother in her time of need and assistance to deliver a baby, and that's something that really is a career thing for most firefighters, even paramedics. Sometimes we put little storks on their cars, so we might have to. For John, and a little date there, but once again, I wanted to recognize the crew for such a, actually, an above and beyond. It's not like, as I said, every day we deal with these kind of things. So we appreciate increasing the community's population and assisting our people in need. So thank you very much, John. We appreciate that.
So, on behalf of the City Council, John, it's my honor to present you the certificate of recognition for your actions on May 30, 2023, and I'm sure that is an experience you will never forget. I would also note that, you know, we are so fortunate in Batavia to have the fire department crews that we do have because there's very, I don't think there's anything that you guys wouldn't handle and also probably do in a very professional and courtesy manner. So I just want to officially, on behalf of the City Council and myself, thank you for our Spanish department, wish you and the Batavia Fire Department, the great blessings they have as you go forward and continue to serve this in the town where not unusual now that I see on my phone, the Batavia Fire Department, is responding to over 20 calls a day on any day. That's a huge volume of activities that you're achieving, and I appreciate the good efforts that you and all those with you are making for the people of Batavia. So again, thank you, and I agree with that.
All right, moving to item number nine, which is motion to approve the sale of excess
land at 1359 Brandywine Circle. Who's got this one?
Thanks, everybody. I appreciate it.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're on stage.
Okay. So, yeah, the ordinance before the council tonight, or actually, oh, the motion, I should say, is for the property sale 1359 Brandywine Circle. This property did go up to bid. We received one bid. The successful bidder, Jeffrey Keller, bid $47,500 with no other bids being received. That is the minimum bid that was required for this particular item, and the City Council would need to vote, have a two-thirds vote to approve this, to take action. So staff does recommend approval of the motion tonight.
You're looking for a motion and a vote, then? Is that what?
Yes.
Somebody?
Second.
Move Alderman Soufa, Second Baldwin, Malay, for the approval of the excess land sale at 1359 Brandywine Circle. Any further discussion? Kirk, call the roll.
Soufa?
Aye.
Barron?
Aye.
Lehman?
Aye.
Ayazi?
Aye.
Malay?
Aye.
Uer?
Aye.
Serone?
Aye.
Vogelsinger?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Lancy?
Aye.
Beck?
Aye.
Peiper?
Aye.
Chanset?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
14 yes, no, none absent.
Motion's approved.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, item 10 is a Main Street report. Do we have somebody? Oh, there you are.
Beth Walker is ill today, so I'm filling in. I'm Susie Ray. I'm on the board of Batavia Main Street. So I've got some updates for you tonight. We had the Cocktails in the Park and Dinner Table events this past month. We exceeded our fundraising goal for Cocktails in the Park despite the difficult weather that evening. And for Dinner Table, Fox 32 did a segment on the events on August 13, which was a great, you know, publicity for the town of Batavia, really, and the wonderful things that we do here. We're still waiting on some final expenses to get the numbers for that, but Beth will present the donation to the food pantry at the next Main Street minute. Block Party is coming up September 3 from 4 to 9 p.m. right out here at Peg Bond. It will include the Car Show on River Street, $3 tasting samples from 10 different Batavia restaurants. The Family Zone is hosted by Batavia Congregational Church, the Pie Bake Off by Batavia Mothers Club, another favorite, dance performances by Batavia Academy of Dance, and live music from David Ficario and ORD Rocks. We hope to see you all at that event. It's a good family, all-ages event that we put on every year. The Boardwalk Shops, their July sales were up 2.6% from June, down from the previous seasons, but up from last month. And then the Main Street staff completed two summer promotions. We distributed $1,180 in downtown dollars to be used exclusively at participating downtown businesses through the Shop the Market, Shop the Town promotion, of which we had 321 entries from 44 different zip codes. So that's the one at the Batavia Farmer's Market. And then there was the Shop the Boardwalk Shop the Town promotion with 101 entries from 22 different zip codes. And lastly, Thrown Threads, which is a boardwalk shop currently, is opening their brick-and-mortar location at 125 South Batavia Avenue. They're doing a soft opening, kind of an open house, on September 21 from 4 to 9 p.m. with demonstration, shopping, appetizers, and more. So that's the combination of Dirty Clay Co., so pottery, and Earth Knots, macrame. They combined this year at the boardwalk shops to create Thrown Threads. So that's going to be another great retail and workshop space in downtown Batavia. And that's all I have for you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor? I'd like to point out that Susie was one of the original boardwalk shop owners and is now one of the co-owners of Light &amp; Pine Collective at Wilson Street Mercantile and a vice president, right, for the Batavia Main Street Board? That's correct, all of those things. So a leader, a leader in our community, which started as a boardwalk shop. Yes, yeah, actually started at the Artisan Collective prior to that, but yes, I mean, yep. Slowly but surely, you guys just pulled me in. It's a beautiful, a beautiful part of our community that we can start as an artisan collective and then end up here. So thanks, Susie.
Thank you. All right, moving to the administrator's report.
Thank you, Mayor. So we also want to introduce another new business that is coming to town. It's Dover Saddlery. It's a new equestrian-oriented retail store that will be located in the shopping center where Trader Joe's and Sierra Trading is currently located. So we're exciting, excited to welcome them to town as well. Also, Zach Ewald attended the kickoff meeting for EV readiness cohort in Chicago. It's a program run by the Metropolitan Mayor's Council, and we're going to be in the next round of communities seeking to get certified as an EV-ready community. And Scott Buning, our Director of Economic Development and Community Development, was part of putting together the program for that. And so both Zach Ewald and Anthony Isom will be attending those meetings to get us certified as an EV-ready community. Officer Caleb Saxman, Officer Peter Riddelick successfully completed the 16-week field training and evaluation program, and they will be released to solo patrol operations as of last week. And our Public Works is participating in a voluntary program with Illinois OSHA to evaluate our Public Works facility and operations and to help us to identify any potential safety concerns and make recommendations for us on improvements. They offer this program in a cooperative manner to provide education and guidance for public employers. And after three long months, the city's EV charger has finally been scheduled for repairs. It was actually damaged by a vehicle last May, and so it's been out of service awaiting repair parts, and it's anticipated that it will be operational again by early September. Also, just wanted to make everyone aware that due to the rise in temperatures, that Groot is going to be starting the garbage pickups one hour earlier this week. So if everybody could have their garbage out to the curb by 6:00 a.m. instead of 7:00 a.m. on their regular pickup day, that would be very much appreciated so that we can help assist them to get everything picked up. And that's all I have, unless anybody has any questions for me.
Uer, it's 5:00 a.m.
It's 5:00 a.m.?
Yep.
By 5:00 a.m. Thank you.
One other thing, the overnight paving. So our contractor will be in, if you recall, we did have overnight milling out on Island Avenue and Wilson Street, and they will be in Wednesday night into Thursday morning. So overnight Wednesday into Thursday, they'll be paving, again, starting in the overnight hours on those streets right here in the downtown.
So if you are going to be visiting City Hall, you may want to either park further up on Houston Street or, you know, your best bet to park over at the Larson Becker Lot and just use the pedestrian walkway over the river to come to City Hall, but in those two days thereafter, we'll have beautiful roads and beautiful parking lot for you to park. Was there one more?
Yeah, one more thing. With the excessive temperatures that are going to be occurring on Wednesday and Thursday, we're going to be opening up a cooling center in the lobby of the police department. It's Thursday morning, 11 a.m. through Wednesday evening at 8 p.m. So anybody that wants to come in and use the lobby as a cooling center, we just ask that you check in with the police records desk.
Right.
Anybody else? Now's your chance.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. We have other business from the City Council? All right, I'll be hopefully very quickly here for you. Under the mayor's report, I just have a couple of things to share. I see where the former Sears store at Main and Wilson Street out on Randall Road is now going to be opening as a Halloween store. And I guess they're going to have costumes and other assorted Halloween things there. I just stumbled on that myself this morning, and I didn't know it, so thought I'd report that to you. I will share with you that I've had with what's been talked
Groot is going to be starting the garbage pickups one hour earlier this week. So if everybody could have their garbage out to the curb by 6:00 AM instead of 7:00 AM on their regular pickup day, that would be very much appreciated so that we can help assist them to get everything picked up. And that's all I have unless anybody has any questions for me.
Ewer, it's 5:00 AM.
It's 5:00 AM?
Yep.
By 5:00 AM. Thank you.
Laura?
Yes.
One other thing, the overnight paving. So our contractor will be in, if you recall, we did have overnight milling out on Island Avenue and Wilson Street, and they will be in Wednesday night into Thursday morning. So overnight Wednesday into Thursday, they'll be paving, again, starting in the overnight hours on those streets right here in the downtown.
So if you are going to be visiting City Hall, you may want to either park on, further up on Houston Street or, you know, your best bet to park over at the Larson Becker lot and just use the pedestrian walkway over the river to come to City Hall. But in those two days thereafter, we'll have beautiful roads and beautiful parking lot for you to park. Was there one more?
Yeah, one more thing with the excessive temperatures that are going to be occurring on Wednesday and Thursday, we're going to be opening up a cooling center in the lobby of the police department. It's Thursday morning, 11:00 AM through Wednesday evening at 8:00 PM. So anybody that wants to come in and use the lobby as a cooling center, we just ask that you check in with the police records desk.
Right.
Anybody else? Now's your chance.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. We have other business from the city council? All right, I'll be hopefully very quickly here for you. Under the mayor's report, I just have a couple of things to share. I see where the former Sears store at Main and Wilson Street out on Randall Road is now going to be opening as a Halloween store. And I guess they're going to have costumes and other assorted Halloween things there. And I just stumbled on that myself this morning and I didn't know it, so thought I'd report that to you. I will share with you that I've had, with what's been talked tonight about by Main Street, which has been doing an exceptionally good job under some very adverse weather circumstances, if nothing else, I've had now three different mayors ask me if I would be willing to meet them here some Saturday morning, different Saturday mornings, and take them on a walk through downtown Batavia so they could see the farmer's market and the boardwalk shops and anything else I care to show them. So I don't know what anything else is, but I guess I'll be down here walking around with a couple of mayors and they asked me specifically, don't tell anybody who I am yet because we're just trying to build ideas in our own town. And I will share that neither one of them is from real nearby, so it's not like I think we're going to lose any business. They're just coming because they say they've heard so many nice things about the creative nature of downtown Batavia and how good it is to be in the boardwalk or the farmer's market or whatever have you. So we're doing something right and I appreciate it very much. The final thing I just wanted to do is share with you an experience. This past weekend, I was out some, with some friends of mine, and as most of you know, I have an interest in the fire service, and we were out visiting some fire stations. And we stumbled into, we didn't stumble, we went there, into Freeport, Illinois. And we walk in the fire station and the fire, I had my Batavia Fire Department shirt on. And I walk into the Freeport Fire Station and the one guy on duty says, oh my goodness gracious, this, this can't be right. Are you really from Batavia? And I said, yes, I was. And he says, well, ironically, about an hour ago, we had a local resident show up here and wanted to have their blood pressure checked because they're dismayed because the minister of their church in Freeport just left to move to a church in Batavia. And he says, it sounds like Batavia really has got some good things going. And he says, who are you? So then one of the other people with me told him who I was, and then they were dumbfounded that they couldn't believe that I was who I said I was. I was, I gave them business cards and then they said, well, this is certainly an odd thing to have it happen within an hour of each other that we have a citizen in here expressing wonderment about Batavia and within an hour, the mayor walks in. So then I, my final thing was, in this same trip I was on, I was in the Belvedere, Illinois Fire Department. And Belvedere, Illinois is the place where they had the movie theater or the old movie theater hit by the tornado and somebody got killed and they had a band that was getting ready to play and everything. This is a few months back. And as you may remember, that was the same storm that hit Batavia later that same night. It wasn't, I don't think it was the same one, but it was a line of thunderstorms in that line. And so the secretary at the fire station, I was telling her about how we had, we've had two now tornado experiences with Belvedere. In 1967, in May of that year, April, I guess it was, Belvedere got hit by a terrible tornado and it hit their height, new high school. Number of students were on buses, several got killed. There's a big memorial to this whole thing on the front of the Belvedere High School. If you go up there today about this terrible thing that happened. And at the same time, Batavia High School had just, the new building, and now it's been rebuilt several times, out on Main Street, had just been opened. I was a senior there this year and it was in the spring of 67. I was getting ready to graduate and they had the baseball team out in what today is the football field and they were throwing balls back and forth. And all of a sudden, the coach said, whoa, I don't like what I'm seeing. Everybody get, run and get into the gym. So the baseball team got into the gym and within a minute or two, a tornado came down and hit Batavia High School at the west wall and it was a metal sheet and it, so I'm told, it bent it in about three or four inches. It didn't break it, but it bent it in. And they had skylights originally in the, in the roof of the gym there and it blew out the skylights and all this broken glass came down on the floor. But again, the team was standing off to the side by the wall, so nobody, nobody got hurt. But then the storm jumped over the high school and it went over and did significant, I have pictures of this, significant damage to Furnace Electrics Plant, which was over on Van Nortryck at McKee Street. And I mean, it really did some numbers on those buildings. Kind of ironically, I guess tomorrow night, we're going to have a presentation from a developer about what they want to do at the old furnace site. So there's all these things that kind of come together in my life that happened 40, 50, you know, what's this, 50 years ago. And tomorrow night, we're going to talk about the day of the tornado. We aren't going to talk about it, but that's because the site where the tornado hit is where this subdivision you're going to hear about tomorrow night was. So I was sharing this tornado stuff with the secretary at the Belvedere Fire Station and she said, that's a real strange story that you can tell. And she says, they are now fixing the movie theater back up so that it'll be, going to be repaired and put back into service. But they did lose the roof and part of the wall and everything else when that one hit. But to think that on both times that Belvedere got hit, Batavia got hit within about a 20-minute radius thereafter. So it shows you that these storms don't really have any set course, but we've got a strange relationship going with Belvedere when we both get hit by tornadoes within 20 minutes of each other. And the Weather Bureau came out, I believe at the request of ESDA, and it came down in the farm field behind our west side fire station. And there was apparently some markings on the ground there that illustrated it was there. It then apparently went back up in the air and it went with a high wind through the southwest side of Batavia, over between Morton Street and Main Street is where the damage was. And we had some houses with some roof damage and other things. Some trees came down. It then jumped the river and went right out east Wilson Street as near as we can tell. And it got to Van Beuren and Wilson and it hit a tree, which went into the house at the northwest corner of Van Beuren and Wilson. It's, the damage is still evident on the front of the house that was done. And then it went out east Wilson Street and took down some electric lines out at Kirk Road in Wilson and that was one of the reasons we had some significant electrical damage. So we're not immune from it and I just would caution everybody to, when the Weather Bureau puts these warnings out, it seems like, and I've heard other people say, that it seems like this weather is getting to be a real, real in-your-face type thing and that we need to encourage people to pay attention to the weather. If you see it not looking good, turn on your phone or your radio or TV because there'll probably be some warning or some alert to what's happening. And I know some of the stations now will interrupt programming and bring their weather people back and they'll just talk till whatever's going to happen is out of the area. But the weather suddenly seems to be nothing that we need to laugh at or play with. These are real deals. And if you look at what happened yesterday in California, they're having events like we've never seen before out there. And goodness knows what we're going to get. So just, I don't mean to be a scarecrow here, but I really think that we ought to make sure that we're all aware that the climate is changing and we do need to know what's going on and we do have the ability, hopefully with the weather service we have. Because we've had, I'll call them near misses in Batavia here in the last couple. And in that case, our relationship with Belvedere, they, they've gotten the worst of it both times, but we both got hit on by this, in the same line of storms. And they're a little bit farther out than we are, so they got hit first and then we got hit second. So anyway, that's all I have to report. So I entertain a motion for adjournment.
Moved.
Moved by Sofa, second by Malay. Kirk, call the roll.
All in favor?